I'm going to turn this over to Thursday.
Call this meeting to order? Call this meeting to order, City Clerk, please take roll call.
Councilmember Edner.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Graham-Mehia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Roll call for Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Dominique Castanen.
Here.
Harold Orozco.
Here.
Sandier Ariano.
Here.
Brenda Kopel.
Here.
Carmen Flores.
Here.
Dithia Garcia.
Here.
Emily Mercado.
Here.
Marco Palacios. Absent, Guadalupe Perez.
Yes.
Joseph Reyes.
Here.
Fabian Reynosa.
Here.
Tina Ruiz.
Here.
Siki Sono.
Here.
Angelo Mundaka.
Here, ma'am.
Adriana Vargas. Can I please have you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may take seats. Remain standing. Mundaka?
Good evening, my name is Cadet for Sunburst Mundaka. I will be conducting a small prayer, so if I can have you guys, please bow your heads and repeat after me. Our Father in heaven.
Our Father in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name.
Hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come.
Thy will be done.
On earth as it is in heaven.
Forgive us our debts.
Forgive us our debts.
As we also have forgiven our debtors.
Lead us not into temptation.
Lead us not into temptation.
But deliver us from evil.
But deliver us from evil.
In the name of the Father.
In the name of the Father.
The Son.
And the Holy Spirit.
We all say.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Like that, you guys can go ahead and have a seat. We have asked the Sunburst Youth Academy, their student council, to join us tonight and participate in the opening of the council meeting. And the student body president is here, and I'm going to have her just reintroduce each of the students. Then we're going to let them go back and sit in the audience and participate in the meeting if they choose to from out there. But we wanted to bring them in. They're going to be graduating the first part of June after their five-and-a-half months of classroom efforts over at the base. And we're also going to have Major Armstrong give us a little bit of an update about what the Sunburst Youth Academy is about and what these young people are trying to do to better their lives. So as soon as we do the introductions, Major, if you'll come to the podium, that way you can kind of let us know.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Castanon. I'm the class president of Sunburst. On the end is our class recorder, Orozco. Next to him is Ruiz, followed by Garcia, then Reynoso, Cadet Mercado, Cadet Kopel, Cadet Ariano, Cadet Snow, Cadet Flores, Cadet Vargas is one of our first sergeants. Cadet Perez is also a home room rep, Cadet Reyes is a home room rep, and Cadet Mundaka is the other first sergeant.
Thank you very much. We take your seats. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate the space.
Thank you, guys. It loves everything, okay? We'll try and make sure you're graduated.
I'm the director for Sunburst. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to come in here and participate with your evening. We're very honored and know how busy your time is, so I'll try to keep this short. We've been on the Joint Force of Training Base since the beginning of roughly '07 with our first classes starting in 2008. And we run two cycles, five-and-a-half months residency per year, followed by a post-resident of 12 months. We are a program for dropouts, is the bottom line, and we cater to the six southern counties of Southern California. So we primarily with Orange and Los Angeles. 16- to 18-year-old male and females, and they live with us 24/7. So they're coming to us, they've had issues in the past, they've decided to make a change for their life. And with our partnership with Orange County Department of Education, we can give them a year's worth of credit in that five-and-a-half months' time. So we can move them back to mainstream with their high school, or we can provide them a high school diploma or GED as they so choose. So as we graduate Class 11 on the 7th of June, which you're all invited, 9:30 at start time at the Cottonwood Church, we're going to have 30 of our kids earn a high school diploma, and we are expecting approximately 30 more prior graduates of Sunburst to come forward and receive their diploma as well. So each year, it's growing with as long as we've been here. So we're excited because this is a great program, we're turning kids' lives around, and you should see them as they walk across that stage. I know many of you have been there, but again, it would greatly appreciate it if you could join us. So if you have any questions, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to answer them, but I thank you again for the opportunity. Questions?
Thanks for coming. Your program's awesome. The first year I was on the council, I got to come and hear some of the testimonies of the kids who had succeeded. If I remember right, it's about an 85% success rate for you, isn't it?
Well, ma'am, actually, we're over 90% now. We lead the nation, so we're extremely proud of that, but we have a very large success rate.
We're very proud of you, too. And I would encourage anybody, is there opportunities for volunteers to help, or is it strictly just run through the base?
Absolutely. We're always in need of mentors, ma'am, and those mentors, we ask that they track the cadet through the residency portion, followed by the 12 months after. We do have a program where we vet everybody and screen them prior to.
Good.
And those that pass the vetting process, we give them some in-house training so that they know how to act accordingly. Absolutely. We love volunteers, and they make our job very easy, and we appreciate it.
Well, and it makes, it gives back to them, too. I've been involved with kids before, and it's one of the best things I've done. So thank you so much for coming tonight, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very nice to see you again. You know, since 2006, Jerry, myself, and Dean, being on the council, we were there during your inaugural year. And I would also commend, Councilmember Gross has always had a very active presence with you guys. And Dean, you've done a great job, and I really appreciate you bringing everybody up. You know, I'd say the same thing I've said when I had the opportunity as mayor last year talking to the graduates, is that, you know, you guys have a great opportunity, you have a community here that totally supports you, and you need to be able to take advantage of the mentors and know that at any point, you can call City Hall and get mentoring any time for any one of us council members. So we just want to congratulate you, we wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And I want to just acknowledge Councilmember Gross for pulling this together and working with you. I think it's just a great opportunity, and I'm glad that it all came together the way it did. So thank you to the cadets. Best wishes on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, if I can have the council join us in front, we have a couple of presentations. First up, we'll have somebody, a longtime member of the community, Althea Miller. Please, could you come forward? And we have a certificate for you. Althea, in recognition of your many years of dedicated volunteer service to the community, to LATV, we have this certificate of recognition for you, and we just want to thank you and wish you well in all your future projects. There you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kusamoto, and council members. First of all, Doug, I don't think we have audio.
Hold it closer. Hold it closer.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. That better?
Yeah.
Depends on who you know in the back room. Honored and I'm humbled by this recognition. 27 years with Los Alamos Television. On the ground floor started. I'm, I wish, that's a child's word, I am sorry that Jeffrey Peters isn't here. He was our station manager at the time when I came on board and went through the classes. And he's the one that got me into my show, Traveling with Althea. And I said, Jeffrey, I don't know, I don't know what to do. And he says, you've traveled. He says, I don't know. I said, I don't know where to begin. He says, I want you to go home, I want you to get the telephone book, I want you to open it up to Department of Tourism. At that time, all of the Departments of Tourism were on the West Side. So I went home, opened up the telephone book, closed my eyes, and put my finger down, and it ended on China. So I, oh, that looks pretty good. I got my best professional voice, and I called. And I told the gentleman, spoke to the Director of Tourism, that I had a traveling show, and I wanted to highlight China. And he says, I'll get back to you. And I thought, well, that's all I'll hear about that. The next day, I got a call. And he says, I spoke to Beijing, and they would like you to come to China. I said, thank you very much. I have one more request. I can't go by myself, I have to have a cameraman. He didn't know that my cameraman was my husband. I can't be in front of the camera and behind the camera at the same time. He said, I'll get back to you. So, okay, the next day, got a call, he says, cameraman can go. So that was 27 years ago. And Los Alamos Television has sent me all over the world. I have over 150 shows. I was on seven cable systems, but different ones have been bought up, and I'm now on Time Warner and Verizon. So look for me. I'm in reruns, Traveling with Althea. The countries don't change. They're there, and they're waiting for you to visit. So my last goodbye, I'll use my tag. Don't forget to plan ahead, pack light, and have a good time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Althea. Next, in observation of what the drowning prevention summer, Chief Abel from the Orange County Fire Authority, are you here? So we have a proclamation here from the city, and I'll skip all the wherestes and kind of just towards the end, the council hereby proclaims May 27 through the September 2 as a drowning prevention summer and encourages all residents, schools, recreational facilities, businesses, and homeowner associations to become partners in the preparedness by increasing the knowledge of proper safety measures to follow in preventing unnecessary drowning. So with that, here's the proclamation. Cory.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council member, members of the audience, thank you very much. My name is Cory Lakin, I'm the Director of Recreation and Community Services. This is Recreation Manager, Emlyn Moya. And seemingly, we never end with the race on the base, and we're so excited to be here tonight to continue on with another wonderful announcement for the race on the base. And for that, I'll turn it over to Emlyn. And if you don't mind coming over, I want to broadcast a little photo up on the projector there.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. If I can turn your attention to the photos that Cory's going to put up on the screen. For the first time, the Race on the Base event has gone international. The Race on the Base 10K Shadow Run took place on Friday, April 26, for the soldiers deployed to a training mission in Afghanistan, which is part of a Regional Support Command capital part of NATO. Approximately 110 US soldiers and 20 soldiers from Australia, Romania, and Canada participated in the run, representing several branches of the military, including the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marines. Through Trident University sponsorship, the 2013 Southland Credit Union Los Alamos Race on the Base race participant shirts and bibs were shipped over to Afghanistan for the soldiers to participate. And the next picture, the flag in the group photo was carried on a combat mission the day prior. The chief combat advisor who organized the event, Major Eric Peterson, sent this same flag pictured here overseas to the city of Los Alamos as a thank you for allowing the soldiers to participate in the Race on the Base Shadow Run in Afghanistan, along with a certificate, personally signed race bibs, and a wooden plaque representing the Spartan advisor team. It is with great honor that we present to you on behalf of the Spartan soldiers deployed to Afghanistan, this American flag, this certificate, personally signed race bibs by the soldiers, and a plaque as a thank you for allowing the soldiers to participate in the first Race on the Base International Shadow Run. The certificate certifies that this American flag was carried into battle on Spartan 41 while conducting combat operations in Kabul, Afghanistan, sent from the soldiers of Sparta. That is the end of my presentation. Can I take one picture for staff? We will be, we'll be displaying these items at the community center in the lobby for you all to view. Thank you.
Thank you. So the last one, Ms. Rollmire, you might come up here. Oh. She's a little nervous. Oh, yes, thank you. Do you need us up here? Just for a picture. Oh, sure, too. But yeah, can I get Nick and Ellie to come up? My name is Josh Wilson, I'm with the, excuse me, with the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals. And we are awarding two recipients for our Chamber of Commerce Youth Ambassador Scholarship and our We Hire Scholarship. So for those who don't know, the Youth Ambassador Program is a result of the unique alliance between the youth and our community, and endeavors to facilitate that link by increasing awareness and understanding. And our scholarship recipient of the Youth Ambassador will basically act as kind of liaison, go out to community events, and promote business within Los Alamos community. Criteria is the applicant must be a junior in the year of high school, in Los Alamos High School, with at least a 2.5 GPA, and have some community service. So our recipient is Nicholas Rigdon, and we are very excited. He has currently, or he's currently a member of the California Scholarship Foundation, Spanish Honor Society, Academic Quiz Team, and Interact Club. His past experience includes the Seal Beach Mary Wilson Library Summer Program, and also working at the Run Seal Beach 5K and 10K. He's a scholar athlete while playing soccer, which is at least a 3.5 GPA, and he's also been on the principal's honor roll each semester since the sixth grade. So we wanted to, he wanted to stay involved with the community and bring more perspective for well-rounded high school student that he is, the chamber activities, and we are very excited to present him with our young professional program, or, sorry, the Youth Ambassador for our 2013. And then our recipient for our 2013 We Hire Los Alamos Scholarship, we're presenting both these awards at the senior awards night, is going to be Ellie Merrill. And she is a senior currently at Los Alamos High School. And the award goes to the exemplary student who holds a part-time position while also maintaining a high GPA in the position at least for six months. So it's somebody who's actually working and going to school and also making their grades. So Ellie's been outstanding students, she's received the Academic Award of Excellence by obtaining a 4.0 GPA while she's going to school. She's participated in Los Alamos High Surf Team, Swimming, Sailing, and Water Polo Teams, where she received a Scholar/Student/Athlete Award. And she's also had leadership experience by serving on the ASB, captain of the sailing team, and many other leadership positions. She's volunteered at the American Cancer Society, National Cherry League, Los Alamos Recreation Center, and Acosta Youth Shelter. And she's all while working at that endless summer where she plans on taking these skills she acquired from there to her post-secondary education. So we're very excited for these two young individuals here of our scholarships.
Congratulations. Congratulations. All right. I see they already got their picture for her. Very good, thank you.
that, Councilmember Edgar did want to mention something real quick.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the public aware, I've had a discussion with the mayor last week and the city manager, I've got an engagement, I've got to go to the East Coast leaving tonight, so I'm going to be leaving the council meeting at 7:30, so if anybody's wondering why I'm leaving, we did it in advance, so I just wanted to make you aware.
No surprises there. Thank you, Councilmember Edgar. So next up will be oral communication, so any member of the public wishing to speak can do so at this point in time on any, any subject matter within the jurisdiction of the Los Alamos City Council. There are agenda items that you may wish to speak at, and that will come up later. We'll ask you, hold your comments till then, if there's anything in general that you wish to speak about, by all means, and I do have blue cards here for some of the speakers. And first up is Shelley Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council members for allowing me to speak. My name is Shelley Henderson, I'm editor of Orange County Breeze, and I am a resident of Cypress. I have been told that a flyer currently circulating in Los Alamos cites Orange County Breeze as a source of accusations that Los Alamos Mayor Warren Kusamoto violated specific penal codes of the state of California in regards to recording conversations. Because I have not seen a copy of the flyer myself, I am relying on a description that may not be accurate. However, I believe it is important to stress that all that Orange County Breeze did was to report on what Cypress Councilman Doug Bailey reported at the May 13 meeting of the Cypress City Council. No specific section of the penal code was mentioned, either by Councilman Bailey or in my article. Councilman Bailey was obviously angered by Mayor Kusamoto's attempt to record the conversation. Orange County Breeze takes no position on motivation by anyone involved in that meeting. Because we were not there, we likewise take no position on whether Mayor Kusamoto asked for permission to record the conversation, or on the location of the recording device. While investigating the incident, I have been told by multiple sources that Mayor Kusamoto regularly records conversations. That makes the attempt to record that particular conversation at Spagatini's less an outlier, but probably not more politically astute. I strenuously object to the flyer's misleading and inaccurate characterization of the coverage of Councilman Bailey's report. I am also told that Orange County Breeze is cited by the flyer as OC Breeze Newspaper. The newspaper jabber regarding the Orange County Breeze is old and tired and should just fade away. Orange County Breeze began as an online source, oc-breeze.com, for news in northwest Orange County. A monthly print edition was added almost a year later. The print edition cannot print timely news unless the news politely schedules itself just before we go to press. So the focus of the print edition is people, places, things, and events in northwest Orange County, especially upcoming events to let our readers plan ahead. The monthly print edition is not trying to be a weekly community newspaper or a daily regional newspaper. As to possibly independent assertions that the city of Cypress is deliberately blocking the use of temporary parking space by Los Alamos Medical Center, we can report that this morning a Cypress spokesman denied that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Help me, I'm sorry if I get the name wrong.
Liga.
Liga Olain?
Olain.
Olain.
That's okay. I get it all the time. Yeah, my name is Liga, and giving me moral support back here is Mike Devon.
And where's?
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Coward over there. Oh, gosh. Good evening, council members. Our purpose for being here this evening is to request a variance on Los Alamos Municipal Code Number 6.16.100 for Orville Lewis Park in the Highlands, allowing us a two-hour morning time approximately 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, so that our dogs could be off-leash to fetch and play with other dogs in the neighborhood. Orville Lewis Park is enclosed with only one entrance and is a quiet residential, or is a quiet area, so the dogs don't get distracted by cars and everything else that goes on, they can just be happily playing among themselves. It seems that the park seems to be underutilized, especially in the morning hours. Whenever, and we are not in compliance with the ordinance, that when dog owners go down there in the morning between those hours, there is nobody else ever down there. I'd say never, let's call it 99.9%. And so that, you know, that's why we were looking at that timeframe, because it is not utilized at that point in time. We are aware of the times that it is being used, that during the summer months, there are kids' programs that are there at the park. They usually start at 10:30, and you know, most of us are done by that time, or are done at that time, because nobody's ever gone there when some other event was going on to try and disrupt anything there. And then also, we're aware of that the school teams practice there in the afternoon, and again, the same thing, you know, nobody goes there to try to disrupt that. And again, the same thing, you know, nobody goes there to try to disrupt that. During collecting petition signatures, there was overwhelming positive reaction, even from neighbors that do not have dogs. One person said it would be neighborhood-friendly to be able to do that. And can I give you our list of our petition signatures? We got 80 of them on here. Oops, that's my copy. There you go. We've gotten 60 signatures and we've had about a two hours left. Maybe about a week and a half to work on it. Dog owners in the Highlands are diligent about picking up dog waste and having control of their dogs. These dogs are not dropped off and picked up. There's no babysitting service there. And we are not asking for a dog park as such. That, you know, entails a lot more. We would just like to share the park as part of the community, and the dogs that are in the community would also like to be able to use it, and so they can play and run off-leash. They get so much more exercise at the park, running and playing, than you could ever give them if they went for a walk for the same amount of time. It just, and they're so happy at the park. They look forward to it. And some people that go there, I'd just say, you know, more or less on a scheduled basis, the dogs know, okay, my owner's home today, that must mean we're going to the park. And they are, they really have enjoyed it. And it's good, it has been good for the dog owners also, as we have met many neighbors in our community that we wouldn't have met without having the park there, or you know, we don't even know last names, you know. Oh, there's Devin with Lucy, you know, that's it. In closing, we hope you will add us to your agenda, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So next I have a card for Ms. Lois Waddell.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Lois Waddell, and I live on 11092 Ticonderoga, and I will see the trucking terminal from my front yard, hear it and see it and smell it. So I was at Cypress City Council when this map was put up. It is now available. It's Mr. Bailey's comments, part of his presentation. And it is now available on the 33-acre site in the city of Cypress on their website. And I would like the councilmembers to take a look at that. And I understand also that the report, the presentation, is 13 pages, and that's available too. And that was compiled by Mr. Hawkins from the Southern California Association of Government. And I would like you to check into that, to see if those are accurate figures, because we have no way of knowing. But when this flashed up, and it wasn't up too long, I thought that I saw the front of the track in gold. And he said that it was a natural progression down the street, and I was kind of shocked. Okay? So just a second. I want everyone here to see this. So that front of the racetrack that's in gold is warehouse and distribution. And I was very confused, because it was kind of like a huge act of some kind, and it was very, anyway. So I thought, as a realtor, a working realtor here in this city for 16 years previously, that I would go and look and see what was down there. So I drove that area, Catella and Valley View, east of the distribution areas. And there are 11 vacant properties and 700,000 square feet available. So then I just was just like, what is going on? And then I get this thing on my door, which says 7 o'clock. Of course, we start at 6:00. Okay, so anyway. Anyway, so I'm thinking, what is going on? So, you know, the base is going to come up for review in three years. And I found out from Wednesday until now, and I'm very upset, because I found out that the criteria is not if it's needed in the future. The criteria is if it's used. Now, I'm like one block from the runway, and any plane that comes in, I swear it's going through the house. This is it. My life is over. Any use of the base, I hear. Any reserve, they chant, they run, you hear them. My windows are open, I hear the use of the base. I'm always going around the corner at Lexington Down Far Cor, I see what goes in and out all the time. And I said, man, this is great. It's so quiet down here. There's no activity on the base. Oh, it's, most of it's gone, like 90% of it's gone. In three years, is Prologis looking at a municipal cargo airport on the base and coming in to Lexington? Are they after Lexington? Are they after the railroad spur line that is right next to their two-lane road that runs down the barns? Okay, and if you look at this map, you'll see that you can just go out of the 33-acre site, right around to the rest of the gold area, and you can just go right over to your fueling station and some more distribution. And then just take the rest of the track. Are we looking at Prologis? Are we looking at Prologis, Southern California Distribution Center? And that's what I finally had to realize. And I think, you know, this thing and that performance was a smokescreen for what? What's the big situation that's going on right now? I'm talking, you know, Hollywood Park coming in and doing a Hollywood mall thing with the convention center and everything. I think like we're like, you know, east and west here. We're talking a distribution center. That's it. We're not talking a mall. Dr. Allred knows all of the people at Hollywood Park as well as he knows anybody. So he could be talking to them just as easy as he could be talking to Prologis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So go ahead, sir. Would you announce your name, please?
I'm Don Seward, and I am a resident of Cypress. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. If I look familiar, that was because I was here last month. And I am just here to encourage you not to give in to Cypress and the 33-acre truck terminal. Now, I was at the Cypress City Council last week, and I was going to say some words, but things changed, and so what I was going to say was no longer applicable. So there's a lot of activity going on, and I just want to encourage you to, don't let Cypress have the left-turn lane, traffic light, because I feel that you folks have the key and the lock to that area that we're talking about. I guess that's about it. I just want to encourage you to stand tough and don't give in. And that's all I have to say, and I guess I will sneak back to Cypress.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers wishing to speak at this time?
There was no pencil up here, there's no login book, but my name is Chuck Sylvia, a 50-year resident of the city of Los Alamitos, having moved in in June of 1963, when the city was about 4,000 people. Recently, I served for six years on the governing board of the Los Alamitos Medical Center. During that time, I heard the same cadre of people complain about the inadequate parking at the medical center. To wit, J.M. Iveler, Art DeBolt, Dave Emerson, Jody Schloss, they said that a parking structure was needed. When the hospital submitted plans to build the new medical building that is now between the entrance to the hospital and Catella, they complained by the, about the number of parking spaces that would be lost in that development. So the hospital purchased adjoining properties to increase the amount of parking available. Then the same people complained about the businesses that were displaced, even though the hospital gave them relocation money. Then they complained about the expansion plans, saying that a parking structure should be built before any more medical buildings were built. Well, now the hospital wants to build a parking structure. But before they do, they need to find an off-site location for hundreds of their employees' cars. They were negotiating with racetrack's management to utilize the racetrack's vast parking lot for the two-year project, when Mayor Kusamoto insulted Cypress City Councilman Doug Bailey at a meeting in the restaurant. Since the racetrack is located in Cypress, and the racetrack owners want to have a good working relationship with the Cypress City Council regarding future developments, the racetrack manager told the hospital it's a no-go for parking. Shelley Henderson said she contacted the city of Cypress, and they said, no such thing. The city of Cypress has nothing to do with the racetrack property and the parking there. So the building of a parking structure is now on hold for who knows how long. Meanwhile, the Cypress City Council took action at last week's meeting to withdraw their financial support of the fireworks program on the base, thereby costing the Los Alamitos taxpayers thousands of dollars if they want to continue the program. And the Cypress Council instructed their staff to find a new venue for their participation in the July 4th festivities. Councilman Bailey said he is finished with trying to cooperate with the city of Los Alamitos on any future endeavors. Other members of the Cypress City Council expressed their shock, dismay at Mayor Kusamoto's behavior, and are waiting to see how the Los Alamitos City Council handles this issue. As the saying goes, the ball is now in your court.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Any other speakers?
My name is Carol Sylvie, and I live here in the city of Los Alamitos. I have a comment on the meeting that took place in Spagatini's in Seal Beach between Mayor Kusamoto, City Cypress Councilman Doug Bailey, and Assemblyman Travis Allen, where Mayor Kusamoto was questioned whether he was taping their discussion. Rather than admit he was, he left the table, never to return. Councilman Bailey was incensed, and several things detrimental to the city have happened and will have to be dealt with. Mayor Kusamoto is indirectly quoted as saying that he did not, he did tell them he was taping their meeting. I do not believe that, because otherwise, he would have apologized rather than flee from embarrassment. For all your information, the state of California is a mutual consent state, and if you're going to record conversations, you must have people's consent. There are, this is a felony, and it is punishable by thousands of dollars of fines and prison It is also said that it's not, you don't have a presumption of confidence in a public place, such as a restaurant, perhaps not from someone sitting at the next table, but certainly from those at the table with you. This action on Mayor Kusamoto's part brings up the following questions. Is this the first time he has taped someone without asking their permission? Shelley Henderson says no. Are any of the rest of you taping conversations without asking permission? Are conversations with employees being taped? Other than the city manager, I would consider this harassment, because no one else has the power to say no without repercussions. I believe it is necessary that Mayor Kusamoto be replaced as mayor, since the parties involved will not work with him. Unfortunately, Mrs. Mejia is Mayor Pro Tem, and although on the city council for four years, does not have the background, education, and experience to handle such delicate, important negotiations. That means that one of the remaining three of you will have to take over the mayor's chair. The three of you are equally qualified because of your background and education, but I think all parties will be more comfortable with Councilman Richard Murphy as mayor. If he does not feel qualified, then one of the remaining two will have to be chosen. This is a tough choice, but that's why you pay, we pay you these big bucks. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Lauren, I didn't realize you were running for public office right now.
Could you please state your name?
J.M. Iveler. We normally only see stuff like this when there's a campaign going on, and amazingly enough, it's on the Sylvia's normal paper. You know, somebody just spent a lot of money to basically bully you, slander you, hurt you, make you go away. Why in the world would somebody spend literally thousands of dollars in the city of Los Alamitos to attack the mayor if he wasn't doing his job in protecting us? Because the only people who seem to be upset are Prologis, Mr. Bardis, who owns the property, is trying to sell it to Prologis for $33 million, and Mr. Bardis's employee, Doug Bailey. Oh, not employee. He only took $30,000 of a PAC money that belonged to Mr. Bardis, that Mr. Bardis funded the PAC. But, you know, it's not really an employee, it's just somebody who's doing a favor for somebody who did him a favor. You know, our city council, for a change, is actually on the same page. You guys are actually doing a really good job at representing us right now with the disagreement we're having with the city of Cypress over the creation of a truck distribution facility with, originally over 150 bays, now they're saying there's going to be less. You're protecting the community, you're protecting Catella, you're protecting the students in our schools. Every single student from Rosmore, from Los Alamitos, and from Seal Beach, who is above sixth grade, will be north of Catella, in the path of all that truck exhaust. And you guys are doing the right thing. You're protecting our community. And I just think that it's about time that somebody stood up here and said, thank you. I would love to see more of these, one on each and every one of you, because this means you're representing us. And I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes. My name is Pat Blanchard. I'm Rochelle Street in this beautiful city. At the last meeting, this council voted to return to summary minutes as a formal method of recording council meeting minutes. Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend recent meetings, and was not able to object to this, return to this type of minute recording. I remember prior meetings in which this type of recording resulted in hours of arguments over exactly what was said by whom. Please do not return to wasting the time of citizens that attend these meetings, because they are interested in what is happening in our city and are not interested in exactly how a council member believes they are being reflected in the minutes. If you do return to summary minutes with this council, please insert a requirement that any challenge to the minutes be settled prior to the meeting, so that residents that find it difficult to come out at night do not feel that their time is being wasted. I also want to say that establishing council meeting time limits is an excellent idea. I do not want to leave these meetings and go into an empty parking lot after 12:00 a.m. anymore. Thank you. I meant to say, Mr. Councilmember, or Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mr. Carver Hall? Mr. Carver Hall?
I got here and realized that the meeting started at 6:00 and thought, "Wow, I missed out on oral communications." I didn't realize that so many people are going to be speaking today. So I appreciate everybody holding the mic open for me here. So just going to take a second to bring up, as some of you may have seen in The Enterprise and in The Sun this last week, there was an ad that was paid for by Friday Night Lights and AYSO concerning the proposed field fee increases that we assumed was going to be voted on this month or discussed, and we didn't realize until after the ad came out that it wouldn't be agendized until next month. I, to be honest with you, feel that's a huge disservice to the community that it got postponed. I understand there were some bureaucratic reasons for it, but I felt that there was a great value in the council showing some leadership on this issue and speaking before the school district got to vote on it. I don't know what the school district has told you in your work groups, but the impression that we've gotten from their last meeting was that they're prepared to work, to move unilaterally on this and impose the fees regardless of what the council and the Parks and Rec Commission had voted on. So that's a huge issue. And I thought lending your voices as leaders of the community to this, having heard the formal opinion of the commission, I stand here before you always pounding, you know, "What does your commission say? What does your commission say?" And so for those of you who don't know, you're Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission, unanimously, all seven members, not just Pete, I don't control that commission, all seven members unanimously recommended to advise to the council to not approve the fees as they were proposed, simply because there were way too many questions still to be answered, and there was no input of the youth groups who are being asked to contribute a third of the cost of this fee increase. There was no input whatsoever. We went to the Parks and Rec, to the school board meeting. They had held a workshop, and it was one of the most disrespectful pieces of government that I have seen. They were prepared to move forward and vote on agendizing it and weren't going to speak to the community until somebody stood up and said, "Hey, are you guys going to talk to us?" And their first reaction was, "No." You know, we, as the Parks and Rec Commission as a council, you know, I get the feeling you guys are used to having stones thrown at you from back here, you know? To me, it's felt like they were very defensive. They didn't want to talk. They didn't want to be questioned, and they're prepared to move on this. I know that it's not agendized until next month, but I encourage each and every one of you to reach out to anybody that you know that's participating in a youth sports board, be it AYSO, be it Friday Night Lights, be it Pop Warner, be it LA Girl Softball, Baseball. They are 100% against the fees as they're being imposed. And you know that I have stood here and any one of you who I've met privately at a function, I've tried to twist your arms about some kind of capital improvement project for our fields. I'm a huge proponent of that. I'm a big fan of the school district. I just spent yesterday morning at 9:00 a.m., my son walked across the stage at UC Merced, graduated with honors from UC. My daughter graduated in three years from UC Irvine. I attribute that to the fantastic school district. So I'm not in the business of throwing stones at the school district, but their proposition to impose these huge fees, 600%, AYSO is going to go from $10,000 to roughly $70,000. $10,000 to $70,000 in field fees is way out of line and needs to be discussed. So I encourage you all to please reach out to us. I'm sure Mark Brosma, myself, John Heron of AYSO, Larry Strather, any one of you, they'll take the time to speak with you. So I thank you for your time and look forward to that discussion next.
Thank you, Mr. Carver Hall. Okay, any other speakers would like to come forward? Please come forward.
My name is Carol Berry. I live in Los Alameda's, and I just wanted to thank all of you. I'm very proud of our mayor and our council, and I'm grateful and supportive of what you guys are doing. I think that it was disgraceful, shame on Doug Bailey, last Monday night for discrediting our mayor, who wasn't there to rebut, and these allegations are unsubstantiated, and people need to check out California Penal Code Section 632(c) because there's no presumption of privacy in a public place. And, you know, we don't have all the facts, but we do support our mayor and our council, and I thank you all very much, and shame on Doug Bailey.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers would like to come forward? If not, we'll go ahead and close the oral communications. And if I may ask, to council's indulgence, since this has been a topic and it has been focused on me, I do want at least to get my side of the story out there. So I did indeed meet with Councilmember Doug Bailey from Cypress. I told him I was recording. I replaced my recorder, placed my recorder on the table that we were sitting at. In fact, Councilmember Bailey almost knocked it off the table, and he caught it, and he relocated it back on the corner, so it was there. And the purpose of the meeting was to understand the needs of Cypress on this project on Cattella and Enterprise, and I basically had three questions for him. What was the project? And he answered it was, as has been described to us, the trucking, distribution, manufacturing, and warehousing. I asked him if he supported it. He said yes. And then I asked him the other -- the key question is, what does he need from Los Alameda's, if anything? And his answer was, he needed nothing from us. So I thought things were just copacetic, and so be it. That's kind of how it left. So it's unfortunate, but that's what happened, and that's all I really want to say about this, and thank you all for your kind letters, your emails of support, and your phone calls. With that, we'll go ahead to the next item. It'll be item number seven, register of major expenses. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Councilmember Gross and a second by Councilmember Edgar. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Graham Mejia?
Yes.
Mayor Kusamoto?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to, we'll just wait a few moments for Sun vs. Academy to exit. Okay, next up on the agenda is the consent calendar, and these can all be taken care of on one motion, or they can be pulled. Is there any item that wants to be, any member wants to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to move it?
Second.
I'd like to pull item C.
Okay, so we'll pull item C for Councilmember Gross. Let me get a motion second. Is that okay? Make her the motion?
Make a motion to move the remainder if there's no other items to be pulled.
Second.
Okay. All that, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so Councilmember Gross?
On item C, which is the council policy on summary minutes, I would just like some clarification that we are, in fact, going to be looking at something from Granicus. I think it's later on the agenda under discussion. And actually, what I'll do is I'll wait until that item on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and move this.
Second.
Motion second on item C. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Okay, so next item we have, I think it is the one you want to talk about. So the next item up is item 9A. It is software options for transparency. And would like a staff report, please, C manager?
All for you, please.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, as you'll recall, on April 15th, council discussed the possibility of incorporating technology and to help us streamline our minutes, council has decided to go back to summary minutes and believe that some of the technology options out there would provide additional information and transparency for our residents. We have invited Granicus here today to answer all your questions about the technology. Mary Ann, if you'd like to come forward?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. I'm Mary Ann Mooney, and this is Steve Pascucci with Granicus. And we've been working with the city of Los Alameda's and talking about ways to improve your transparency as well as your efficiency. And in these conversations, you know, we understand that you're putting the meetings on cable TV currently, and there's a lot of constituents within your community that do not have cable TV. So we want to help you expand on that transparency piece for everyone in your community by being able to do live as well as on-demand streaming on the Internet. The constituents can view everything from their mobile devices, their PCs, just giving them the opportunity to search through your history to find out more about what's going on and important topics to them.
And what we also do is we integrate your agenda and your minutes documents, make them searchable, and put them in what we call an integrated public record. So as you all know, you know, an item might stretch over multiple agendas. You want to see the history of an item to do with a project, you can search for that term. You'll get the index points where that item occurred across time and be able to watch it go through, go through history. And also have the supporting documentation in a document viewer on the right-hand side. So, you know, watching the meeting is interesting and informative, having the supporting documentation. It takes it to the next level, making it searchable, takes it to even another level, and having it available on all those devices in addition to, you know, PCs, on the mobile devices.
In addition to all of that, the efficiency piece that we were mentioning is basically a way for the minutes to be more streamlined so that Wendy can do the actual minutes live during the meeting. You can link the minutes directly to the video so that the public or internal staff can go in, click on an agenda or minute item, and jump directly to that point in the meeting so they can see live verbatim what was said for that particular item.
Thank you. So bring it back to the council. Questions of either the city clerk or the reps from Granicus?
Well, Dean wants this, maybe he should.
You want to start, Dean?
Yeah.
Thank you.
On our staff report, it has a breakdown of preliminary costs, both the upfront cost, a monthly cost for the first 12 months, and then what the monthly cost is after 12 months. Basically, it appears like there's a $40,100 for an initial outlay, and you've broken down to what those are. Then the monthly fee, the total cost, is that on a per-month basis, or is that for the full 12 months, the $814?
That's for a month.
For a month?
The upfront cost, just so you know, are a couple of our solutions combined in there. We have a voting solution where council can vote with touchscreens, and that gets put into the minutes.
Okay.
So it could also get put up on the screen or the screens outside, so when the votes finalized, people outside can see how you voted.
Okay.
And see who's motioning, what item was on the floor. So that's an option that you can scale up to. In addition, that minutes efficiency software tool is part of that, and then also the streaming portion. So there's three different parts that are separate that you can grow into.
Okay. The cost on the vote touch package, which is the most expensive, well, yeah, the most expensive in here, $27,850. Could you explain a little bit more?
Sure.
What that includes? Does that include some type of, because as you can see, we work off of paper for the most part. So I'm not sure how that gets integrated or if that is included, equipment included in that.
Sure, yeah. So what that's going to be is some tablets that are going to be mounted to the dais, and they're going to be driven off of your agenda. So as items come up, you're going to be able to follow along with the agenda as well as the current item. You're going to be able to press a button to ask to speak, make a motion, and then record your votes also. Part of that upfront cost is coming in, setting it up, training you on how to use it will kind of be your pages while that's happening, and then integrating with your current workflow so that we stay with the, with the style and flow of your meetings right now and don't change it.
And one other question. Currently, there's five members on the city council. We have commissions that are seven members. Is this adaptable within this same cost factor to be able to have the commissions use the same equipment and accomplish the same thing? Because we do post minutes after those meetings are done, but they're not livestreamed or recorded. So would this include all of those types of groups to be able to do that, or is that going to be added fees to?
Yep. So the proposal in front of you right now is for this, for this council chamber, with some networking and getting it straight, we could definitely include the other meeting bodies as well. You probably want to add some touchscreens to account for those other additional members, and we'd want to do some, a little bit more research. But you'd be within pretty close to those costs that you have in front of you right now to do that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Richard, do you have any questions?
No.
Troy?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Okay, so back to us. I'll invite public comment on this item. So any member of the public? Thank you very much, in case there are any questions, but thank you. Any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Do you have any questions?
Sorry?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. So back to us.
I'm sorry, is there a discussion?
Okay. I, I think this is a step forward for us from the standpoint of moving into, into current terminology, if you will, to be able to do some things, to also include the commissions and the other bodies that we have. As I mentioned back when we first started talking about this back in the original budget, mid-year budget reviews, I think it will improve the transparency. I think it'll help the city clerk give us a lot more latitude. I realize there's a fairly substantial upfront cost to start it, but the monthly fees thereafter, I don't think are prohibitive and can probably be worked out within some of the budget, operational budgets that we currently have with the city clerk. But I would, I would defer at this particular point to any other questions that council members may have in terms of moving forward, but I'd like to see us explore it if necessary. You know, the vote cast, touch patch, touch package and CPU may be something that we want to get into gradually, but I think it's a good, good effort for us to do in terms of visibility.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So where do we pay for this? Where does this money come from?
I don't, I don't see where we have it in the budget. We would have to analyze it maybe and come back to you, but, oh, okay.
We want to hear.
Right. At this point, we're only showing about a $9,000 surplus in our budget, so if this hadn't been contemplated, we would have to analyze it and come back to the city council with a recommendation if there was a way to pay for it, or if not, it is, that's a very difficult amount of funds right now. The other option would be reserves, as we've talked earlier, but with a $9,000 surplus, obviously, very tight budget right now.
When we, when we move to go from two meetings a month to one meeting a month, do you guys remember what the approximate savings were per month and/or annually that we saved money by going to one meeting a month?
I think it was like $20,000.
Do you have an idea what that is?
Twenty.
Okay.
Twenty, yeah.
$20,000? Okay.
So two things. One, you know, financially, I think that we haven't finished our budget discussions yet. You know, I'm 100% behind transparency. You know, I voted against this issue coming up a while back, but I said my piece, and I won't continue down that path. But I, I definitely think that the budget issue right now we have with a $9,000 surplus, I personally still think that we are $300,000 overforecasted for revenue. And we got, you know, the big ask in that, the kind of added spending that we added to our city was in a capital garage fund. And so we've put our ask in that, $162,000 of the $300,000 that we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do once we reconcile where we're at budget-wise. So I think this is a great idea, but it compounds a couple of things that I'm struggling with. One is that I thought we consolidated to single meetings a month to save money and time on staff. Second, which I, was the policy issue, which, you know, back in the day, we tried to go to a higher level summary minutes or action minutes so we can free up the city clerk. That didn't work out, so we switched it back for summary for transparency. You know, I didn't vote for it, but I'm on board because, you know, it went. And so I, I think we've done our part there with the financial constraints we have. So I'm struggling with now compounding that one more time, spending $40,000 that I don't see in the budget. Um... I don't see in the budget. And then, I don't know, you know, I'm on the sanitation district, 25 board members, $500,000, $500 million a year versus a $12 million a year. We don't have something like this and, you know, we're going through very large contracts. I don't, you know, I guess, and maybe this is a question to Granicus, I don't know what other cities around us use this, but it just seems like for a city our size, I'm struggling maybe because of the financials and maybe just, you know, we're kind of overreacting to transparency here. I'm just not 100% there. So I guess the one legitimate question maybe to Granicus that I'd like to have answered, can you give me some examples of cities nearby or cities of our similar size that potentially utilize this product to maintain their public records?
Yeah, thank you for that question. We are actually, we're based in San Francisco, our corporate offices, and we have over 1,000 government agencies that we work specifically with across the country and California being one of our biggest clients. And just within your county, the county of Orange is a customer. We've got La Habra Heights, Anaheim, Duane Park, Costa Mesa, La Palma. I mean, I've got probably 35 examples just within the county that I could give you.
Okay, La Palma's a good example. Okay. Thank you. Well, I, I guess, you know, Dean, I'm, I'm open and I, I know I think that you brought this because this is something you're strong, this was an idea to help us with our transparency issue. I'm keeping an open mind, I'm just struggling really with personally the financial part of it right now. And if anybody's got any ideas, I'm definitely open. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Edgar. Any other questions? Councilmember Murphy?
Comments? I would have trouble with the, with the vote cast touch package being included. The other, I, I could see where that might be beneficial. However, you know, we've only concentrated on Granicus so far and I think it'd be worth taking one more step to see what the competition is out there. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I, I would echo exactly what Councilmember Edgar said regarding the cost and where we would get the money and what Councilmember Murphy said regarding other options. We have another option that was not explored in our staff report and so before we move forward, I think that we should have all of our opportunities to compare and contrast before we make any decisions.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for Granicus. In terms of the cycle of the hardware, is that something that you would own and we, we don't own that? It's just something you provide as part of the service?
You would actually be purchasing the hardware.
And what's the, what's then, what's the expected lifetime? Is it seven years, three years?
We, so the encoder that we would provide to, that you would purchase to actually do the streaming of the meetings, we have a warranty on that for three years. And typically, we do see them last four to five years beyond, you know, just that three year life cycle. In regards to the vote cast touch, those are Samsung, Samsung tablets and those, you know, obviously, technology is, is always changing, but, I mean, I've had my iPad, which is very similar for three years now and, and no problems, so.
How long has Granicus been in use in La Palma? Roughly?
I want to say for three or four years.
And so they haven't had to replace their technology yet?
Nope.
But, but when they do, what, what do you think the price tag will be on that, the recurring cost?
It would just be the upfront cost. There wouldn't be no monthly in addition to what they're currently paying.
So the, the monthly fee will be the same, but the cost of refreshing their technology would be something we'd have to bear?
Correct.
And so, okay.
And so the monthly cost is going to cover Granicus hosting all of your information, making sure it's not taking up additional bandwidth for the city. So we would host unlimited documents, unlimited video content for as many meeting bodies as you guys would want to put in the system.
Okay. And then, okay, I think those are the questions that I have. So, and then just kind of just back, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
So back to us. I think that I'm not comfortable with this and I'm looking at city manager and staff to see if there is some way that we can, I guess, begin to look how we can do this maybe for the next budget cycle if it makes sense, to bring it back to the body and see if, is there some way you can squeeze here, squeeze there to pay for this? And then we have a choice, you know, from at least a funding standpoint. I'm, I just kind of think there's different varying degrees of our adaptability to technology and I'm not sure that that's something we're ready to go to yet. I use my laptop here just to save paper so I don't have to lug it around, but it's not the most easy thing to maneuver around, so. And I've been to other city websites where they have the hyperlinks that can take one to the agenda item with video and it is kind of slick, but I, I think just, just for where we're at and the way that we conduct our business, I think we're doing good. I do agree with, I think, Mayor Protim, Grandma Hia about, we ought to look at other options too. So I think back to us, if, if there's a possibility of going towards this, I would like to see us at least form what it is that we want in some type of an RFP and then we might put it out there for a bid. But that'd be my kind of preference. But with here, I don't know, there's no motion on this, so I think we just receive and file this one. Is that okay?
We can do that, but I mean, I'd like to specifically ask staff to, to bring that in, so I'll make that motion for us for future consideration and, and if we come to that point, go ahead and do an RFP and, and see, you know. In, in looking at this program from the standpoint of some of the issues we've tried to address with the minutes being one thing and the amount of time that we've spent going over and reviewing minutes, this seems to me to be a solution that while there is a, a bullet to bite on the front end, down the road, it, it improves. It would give us some advantage to also being able to do the same thing with the boards and the commissions and making them a lot more accessible to the community. The ability to not have to go through the entire agenda. The agendas have been changed since I was on council before that are being posted and I have questioned why that was the case and I, I would like to see us go back to the way it was done originally where the item itself can be, can be tapped on, on the screen and it'll take you to that report. If you go to look at the, at the agenda now, it could be 180 pages and it's very difficult to try and print out just one item that happens to be of particular interest to someone in the, in the public and in the community. So I would like to see us at least make that step to go back to being able to look at each individual item independently and, and I think that's something that's doable based on my discussions with the city clerk. So I'd like to include that in a motion that we, we take that step and then ask staff to take a look at this and see the different things that we can do.
So can you frame it in a motion that, that's very concise?
Yeah.
I'm following them so far.
All right.
I'm unclear whether the funding, you're going to have an evaluation of the funding in that motion too.
Yes, that's fine. I mean, I think we obviously have to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
All right.
And so, are we clear enough from the standpoint of a motion or do I need to try and re-?
I'll second what I think I heard then. Just to show support to have it come back. I'm not 100% with this, but I, I would, I would support you in bringing it back with more data.
And Dean, was that to look at other options also?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right, right.
I mean, I think if we wind up coming up with something and then put it out for an RFP, that's being prudent as well, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so I think we have a motion, city manager, understand?
I'm following all of you right now.
Can you paraphrase the, or summarize the motion?
Look, look at the funding, look at some other options. We're also going to look at like the previous agendas and how they were.
Okay.
And so the combination of, of those matters and maybe even draft up an RFP too.
Okay. So would bring it back to us for further, okay.
Including the funding, potential funding sources.
Yes.
So we have a motion, seconded by Councilmember Edgar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? Okay. Okay, I would like to, Councilmember Edgar, can we skip to item 7E? Can we get your input on it? Just, I don't think, I don't know if we're going to finish it, but I'd like to at least kind of jump ahead.
Yeah.
Can we do that? And while you're here, we can use your time prudently. So if we can, item E is a consideration of legislative platform for 2013. City manager, can you give us a quick?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, as you recall, we considered a piece of legislation about a month ago and the discussion was to revisit our legislative platform. It needed to be updated on an annual basis and it, it has not been since 2008. So this would be to update the Legislative Action Report and to adopt a legislative platform for the year 2013. And this would enable us to be proactive when it comes to addressing legislative items that affect the, the city of Los Alamos, to protect our city's interest in local, state and federal legislation, protect local control, oppose unfunded mandates, promote economic development and partnerships and to protect and stabilize and increase the city's revenue sources. It also gives some of the, the platforms would be economic development, community and housing, environmental quality, public safety and homeland security and revenue and taxation issues. Platforms are at the county, regional, state and federal level. The, the city manager would, on an annual basis, provide a, a report on this, but would also be very diligent on a, on a daily basis, tracking legislation and, and responding to that based on policies established by the city council. And if, if there isn't established policy, then it would be brought to the city council. By the same token, if department heads also have issues within their departments and, in their, their areas, they would bring that to the attention of the city manager to address it and he would react based on established city council policy, which is also comprised in this platform. And as you see, there's a variety of, of topics here that would establish that to basically support and defend the interest of the city of Los Alamos.
Okay. So back to the councils, we have questions of the city manager on this item? Anybody want to go first? Go ahead, Richard.
A few. On the first sentence, we say adopted annually by the city council, but that's not correct, is it?
Yes, that's the way it's been established is that every year, this needs to be brought back to the city council and, and there's been, that's, that's, that's the problem is that from 2008 to now, it hasn't been, been brought back. But you don't, you don't have to do, if you would rather adopt this and, and then say that if it's ever to be changed, you know, there's another way of doing it, but whatever your, your pleasure is. Right now, it's been on an annual basis.
That's not where I was going.
Okay.
In their staff report, we said it was last done in 2008.
Right.
And yet in the procedures, it says annually. I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed five years of this. Okay?
Right, well, it's, okay. It's supposed to be the way it's, way this document is and the way the policy has been.
Okay.
It's, it's supposed to be updated every single year on an annual basis in January.
But it hasn't been.
Right.
Okay, that's my, was my confusion. Do you want to address various policy issues at this time?
Certainly we can.
Or do you want to ask more questions?
But how about we go round of questions and we'll come back to specific policy questions? Troy, do you have anything on this one?
Well, a couple of things. You know, the, there's two components in our city code, the legislative policy and the, and our city ordinance is on legislatively as a body, how do we act? So, you know, the biggest thing that I think is important, that if you look under the city council section as a legislative body, you know, it doesn't point today to a legislative platform. It says that we as a council have to take actions uniformly and vote before we put out a position. In here specifically, in the legislative platform, if you look on page two of eight, you know, it talks about city manager legislative affairs and we get down into the details, legislative advocacy, and it says that council members can take action. And I, I think we've seen two examples since the new council's been seated and we need to figure out, I think, one, the policies, and I'm like Rich, I, I have a couple of policy things I really feel strongly about. And then I have the, the process and, you know, the procedure of how we go about. One, we acted very quickly on, and appropriately, I think, on a, on an action that was brought to the council and we took action, we sent a board, a letter to Sacramento opposing certain legislation. And I thought that was good. I also had brought an item before the council as a member of a regional board and asked for direction and didn't get any feedback here, but I, I, on the board, I did get feedback from a council member and it, but it was inconsistent because we didn't vote on that position, but it was on city letterhead. And I just want to be able to go through and get some clarification on our legislative advocacy of what is right to do. And I don't even want to look back because I'm going to use those as examples, but I just want some clarity going forward. How do we do that? Some of us on, on boards, and, and I think Warren and I are on the biggest boards right now, I depend on feedback here before, I'm, I'm representing Los Al, and this board keeps me honest. And, and I need to know what the procedure is in the future on how I advocate so that I'm consistent with my council. And, and so when I look at this, the clarity should be in this legislative and it should be consistent with what's in our city ordinance. So the, those probably aren't questions, they're just staff technical parts of what's in here. And I, I just, I guess the one question is, do you feel this is consistent with what's in our municipal code?
I, I feel that it is from what I've reviewed, yes. And, and it, but I'd also like to call your attention on this page that it does talk about council members may take positions as an individual citizen, but it discourages that and that any individual communication must be unpersonal, stationary, that is free of Los Alamos identifying information, including logos, addresses, phone numbers. And then up above, it talks about written correspondence by individual council members on legislative items not adopted by the city council may be transmitted if the correspondence identifies it's a position by an individual citizen. So this, this was not in place when the previous example, this would be in place and, and so it would have to go before the city council.
But I would try, this was in place, this was in place in the municipal code. This part specifically is. And I, and I think for me, and again, I'm going to have to leave in a few moments, but I just, Mayor, I'm just wanting clarity. And honestly, I don't want to get into the past, I just want clarity moving forward is if I called Wendy and said, Wendy, I'm on city council letterhead, you know, I want to, I do not want toll roads on the 405, the OCTA just opened it up, I, you know, I'm having a hard time with it. Can you send a meeting or a note on city letterhead to the OCTA saying I adamantly oppose? Could I do that if I don't? I mean, what would be, can I do that? I guess that's the question based on our policy.
I would, I would say yes on this policy because it, it talks about transportation. It also talks about, we're talking about taxation and things of this nature, so.
Okay, so, so just to cut that off. And again, we're putting that theoretical all the way through. City council members, colleagues, do you mind if I do that? And what if my position's not aligned with you? Do you think I'm over-representing the council or the city of Los Alamos as a representative? Or, I mean, because if you're okay with it, then I feel okay going forward because I, as you guys all know, I do get active with some things that I take strong positions on, sometimes even on the Rossmore thing, Jerry and I are about ready to kill each other. But I, I think, you know, I, I just want to make sure, how far can we go and not get into a dispute up here? And, because I'm unclear.
Okay, so, so if I may, Councilmember Edgar, I appreciate what you're bringing up and I know exactly what you're talking about and I'll, I'll take my ownership of that. And if it had come to the body for a vote and it was in, however it was, I would have supported. But I, I am totally on board with what you're saying. I think we need something that we can all adhere to. And what I'd like to suggest and, and because the hour's late and I'm going to look to us, can we table this until we can discuss it next month? I don't know that it's that pressing, but I'd like to really have that good, healthy discussion, so if we can, can we table that?
I'll, I'll second that.
I think this is important.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, so we'll table this and then bring it back. So thanks, yeah, I appreciate, because this is important, Troy. I think we need to work this one out good. So with that, we're going to take a short recess at this point. Councilmember Edgar has a trip to go to and thanks for being here.
My pleasure.
And we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Yeah. We're going to continue on.
Oh, well, I miss mine.
Ms. Cassie? Ms. Ms. Cassie Palmer?
Have you ever seen ears? Big, kind of, friend of mine.
Thanks, Cassie. And so we'll carry, we'll, we'll continue on. The next item that we skipped ahead from is item 9B and thank you, Cory, for your understanding on this one. It's the Winter Wonderland. I kind of characterized this, it'll be the recap of what happened back in the December time period. And with that, city manager?
Thank you, yeah, yes, Cory. Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. Yes, the, what I'm going to present to you today is, is kind of twofold. One, a recap of, of the event from last December 2nd, 2012 and to propose that we continue, One, a recap of the event from last December 2nd, 2012, and to propose that we continue, we, the city, continue to co-host this event with the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals, again, in this upcoming December 2013. Last year was the inaugural event, this is one of our pieces from last year, our marketing pieces, that took place at St. Isidore Historical Plaza. It was co-produced, again, by the city of Los Alamos and the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals. This is one of the first events for the young professionals, and we decided to team up on what we estimate is a terrific event. We estimated approximately 1,200 participants, who did brave the rain for about the first 45 minutes or hour of the event. We had, we brought out, this is a picture here, of the 25 tons of snow that was hand-blown, and on the right, made into a little hill for kids and kids at heart to slide down and enjoy. We had several live performances, we had a Santa's Village, a tree lighting ceremony, arts and crafts, food trucks, and a vendor area. And this event was basically thrown together, I would say, in less than two months. And to have an event with about 1,200 people was terrific. Again, some pictures of the adorable kids dressed up for, in their snow gear. What this event did was provided an opportunity for those who don't necessarily get up into the mountains, or those children who have never seen snow before, a real opportunity to make a snowball, throw it at their parents, and slide down and go sledding. We fortunately, unfortunately, had a nice, long line here throughout the evening. The top picture shows you, they brought in two large semis of ice blocks that they put through a shredder for, not knowing the exact term, but basically blew it into compacted snow, and it was a wonderful opportunity for those kids. We had arts and crafts sponsored by US Bank, the kids made snowmen and ornaments, and OCFA teamed up with us, and they actually escorted Santa and Mrs. Claus to the event from an off-site location, which was terrific to see them come down with the sirens going, and kids were very, very excited. We had three performances from choirs for LAUSD, and the city's Ready, Set, Go preschool program also performed. And the bottom right corner there was Santa's Village, very well decorated, with presents and gifts, nice chair, and a real Santa and Mrs. Claus, courtesy of one of our other sponsors. As you can see, going back to the front page, you can see the laundry list of sponsors there at the bottom. Alamos Eye Care took care of Santa and Mrs. Claus, AYSO made a very nice contribution, so did Southern California Edison to help spearhead this event. With that, our expenditures last year, from the city side, we brought in 15 sponsors, we brought in cash donations of $9,775, and even thousands more in donations. It was a collaboration between businesses, the local business community, OCFA, Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, specifically the Young Professionals, and the city of Los Alamos. It was completely revenue offset, all the staff time was accounted for, where there were actual hourly rates paid to Public Works employees and to recreation part-time staff for not only the day of, but for leading up to the event, to help construct a pedestal for the tree that remained lit for several weeks past the event, up through the holidays, and that remained outside of St. Isidore Historical Plaza, for the community to be able to see both during the day and at night. This year, we are hoping that the council will again be in support of the city, co-hosting this event with the Young Professionals for the Chamber. Tentatively, it's scheduled for Saturday, December 7th. The Chamber of Commerce has already spoke with the neighbors of, on Reagan Street, and we picked this date to ensure no conflicts with some of the neighbors there. Our proposal is to remain at St. Isidore Historical Plaza, and again, close down Reagan Street. It's an ideal location for, to place the snow. Unfortunately, we can't place snow on grass, because it will kill the grass. It took about a week last year for the snow to melt entirely. We can hurry that process along by putting a lot of water on that, but it still does take a significant amount of time for, again, 25 tons of snow, and a lot of it does depend on the weather outside, obviously. There is some additional cleanup that would take time, so if we played on another location, we would just need to understand that it could be a day or a couple of days, that that area would remain closed, if we find another parking lot or another area to put the snow in. We did have food trucks, we had a lot of vendors, so hence the need to close down a portion of Reagan Street. We didn't close it down entirely, but if the event grows and if the neighbors are on board, potentially, we could close down a more significant area of Reagan Street to the community. It provides a free holiday event to the community. Again, we would seek local sponsors and vendors to help make this event completely revenue offset, so it wouldn't be any additional cost. We did put it into the budget for next fiscal year, but the expenditures matches the revenues in both of those line items incorporated into this special event line item, so the revenues and the expenditures do equal each other. Last year, it was not in the budget, but we did see an increase by, again, 97.75 in our expenditures and our revenues to match. And again, it helps a great opportunity to bring out some local performers, both from the city side as well as the school district. We're hoping, now that we're going to get a jumpstart on this, to be able to possibly incorporate some of our contract classes that do a number of performances and things like that, to help build and support the event. So, with that, it's estimated this year that we're going to, it's proposed that we put $10,500 in both revenue and the expenditures to offset. And with that, my presentation is done, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody want to ask questions? Okay, so I'll go. So, I asked this to be brought forward, and I'll be honest, when this came up last December, I wasn't aware that we had agreed to this as a council. And I saw in the consent calendar that we had allocated and spent $6,000, and I questioned then-city manager Angie Avery. And it took a little bit of time for her to explain the whole concept to me, so I appreciate, Cory, that you presented this, and I, you know, my thing was, I thought there was a $6,000 hole in our budget that, you know, we just spent, and didn't realize, and I talked with Johnny Stromar about this as well, that all this revenue was coming in, and we were just basically the clearinghouse for it all, which was, I understand the mechanics of how to do that. So, with that, you know, I am less concerned, but I do have an issue, I think, or not issue, a concern about the non-secular nature of this, you know, the religious connotations, and that's where I would come from on this one. But perhaps if there's a way to embrace all religions and all cultures, I think that might be a better way to approach this.
We tried to make it as non-religious as possible. You know, I believe Santa Claus is a kind of more mainstream, not very religious aspect of it. The tree lighting ceremony, you know, I know a number of people with different religions that have a Christmas tree in their household, that it's a common thing. You know, we, there were a few paper menorahs hung at St. Isidore Plaza, and things of that nature. We'd actually discussed the potential of bringing out a menorah and bringing out the Christmas tree and things of that nature, but it was kind of difficult, one, in a short amount of time, and two, a point, where do we draw the line, and how many religions do you incorporate, and what aspects? So, we tried very hard to bring religion out of it as completely as possible. There's a number of communities that do have tree lighting ceremonies throughout the area, and, you know, if you have ideas in mind specifically to either incorporate or unincorporate certain aspects, we would definitely be open to it. And again, we're just getting going with the planning after the decision today, and we'll continue to get together in that end.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, next, I guess, no other questions, I'll ask for public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak on this?
J.M. Ibler, considering I fought against the sign on the wall behind you, obviously, I have no problem with the concept of a winter wonderland. I have no problem with creating a mound of snow twice the size of City Hall. Go for it. Secular. The city's involved, it's got to be secular. It's called a Christmas tree, it's not called a Hanukkah bush, it's not called the Allah special, it's got a name, and it's associated to a religious holiday. Santa Claus, he's actually been around so long ago, it isn't funny. He is not Christmas, he is just old German fable. I don't have a lot of problem there, but I have a problem with anything that takes a non-secular view. And the Christmas tree lighting, I would have a similar problem, by the way, with the menorah lighting. 15 minutes prayers to the east or west, or wherever it's supposed to be, I'd have issues with that if the city's involved. I don't have issues with anyone doing it for personal faith reasons, I do have issues when the city puts their stamp on it, just like I have issues with the sign on the wall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to us, is there a motion on this?
I'd like, if I could, Mayor, I just wanted to say, first of all, to the people involved, I love the marketing piece, absolutely beautiful, really, really whimsical, and just, I think it made people want to come, it was very inviting. I wanted to say thanks to the Young Professionals group, I know you are a newer group, but what a wonderful thing you brought to our community for the kids. Like Cory was saying, some kids have never seen snow, what a wonderful thing, and at a time of year when the, you know, it's about being jolly, and I just thought it was a great, a great event. And I think that it's great for St. Isidore's too, because for those of you who aren't aware, they're struggling to come up with money to purchase their property, so I think it hits on a lot of different needs in the community, and I just wanted to say thank you for reaching out to the city and having this come forward. J.M., where would Santa put the presents if there's no Christmas tree? Just joking. But my one thing that I would like to say is, I did get some requests from residents saying they didn't know that the Christmas tree that was kind of tucked in that odd little space over by St. Isidore's was really our city Christmas tree. So, I'd like to ask that we split this, and we have the event at St. Isidore's or near there where we had it last, but I would like to ask that we have the Christmas tree at Laurel Park. For those of you who have not been involved before, a few years back, they used to have a fire, a big fire pit, and everybody would come over to Little Cottonwood and drink coffee and sing Christmas songs. So, we're not allowed to do that for safety purposes, but I think this Christmas tree lighting might be a great opportunity for people to get together, and then the whole community can enjoy it, because it's right there on the corner, and it's not kind of tucked in that weird little spot. They said they thought that was St. Isidore's trees and not ours. So, that would just be one thing I would like to ask for the council to consider, that it be at Laurel Park, potentially, if there's, Cory, is there some kind of an outlet there nearby the sign where it says Laurel Park? No?
Fortunately, not. The only electricity is at the restrooms.
At the restroom, so we could just put it on top of the restrooms, then maybe everyone would see it. Well, if we could look into that, or potentially taking action, maybe not for this year, but moving forward, I do think that it would be better served if it was at a local park where people could see it. That is one of our major arteries, and I just think it's better served there. That's all.
So, do we have a motion for this item?
I'll move recommended action.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Gross, second by Councilmember Murphy. Any further discussion? So, put it to vote, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, that's me, no. And it passes three to one. Thank you for that. Okay, next item, it'll be item D, it'll be, it's Proposition 30, Local Control Funding Formula, and ask the city manager if you might.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, this is an item that Mayor Protem Graham Mahia has requested. The city council discussed, and it deals with Governor Brown's proposed local government funding formula for public education, and the recommendation is to direct staff to draft a letter to urge the legislature to vet the proposal through policy committees and public hearings before making a decision. Governor Brown has promised that no school district with, in regards to Proposition 30, would receive less than it did in 2012, 2013, but some school districts will receive additional funding for a student population base that may not be reflective of Los Alamos, thus excluding Los Alamos from additional funding. And the school district is opposed to the current proposal of how the funding is to be distributed, and they feel that it's inequity, distributed, not tied to student demographics, largely state-controlled, and lacking appropriate accountability measures. Also, the California State PTA and other education groups are urging the legislature to vet this proposal through policy committees and public hearings before making a decision. And I've had a communication with Dr. Crop, and she thought that might be advisable, too, that she could support that, and if we did, we would probably also recommend to mention that our local school district is opposed to it, the way it's presently constituted.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the council, the staff of the council? Do you want to go ahead and?
I just attended the last school board meeting, and this was discussed, and Sherry talked very simply about how the measure was meant to give extra money to all the schools, but after it was voted on, then the wording was changed, and now it only goes to a special demographics. Not only do they get 50% of a total amount that they were not accustomed to getting above and beyond from this measure, but if their demographics are such that they're 50% or higher of this proposed demographic, they get 70% of that original 50% on top. So, they're getting an excessive amount of money, where our students would not be benefiting from this at all. And I think it's more that the school district and the people who support this were feeling a little misled, that this was going to be good for all the schools, and now it's for a very specific group. So, they were asking for us to reach out to our legislators and let them know that we would like it to go through the process, opposed to just being put through without any kind of subcommittee looking at it and discussing other options. I think it's in the best interest of the students of the city that we support the school district, we send this letter, and that we try our best to weigh in on this, and hopefully, the things that we say will be taken into consideration. And that's it, Mayor.
Okay, questions of staff from anybody else? Okay, so, back to us, for public comment, I'll open it up for public comment, anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and back to us, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to, for the recommended action.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Graham Mahia, and second by Councilmember Gross to the recommended action, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous, four.
Okay, Mayor and City Council, I will draft a letter on behalf of the Mayor and City Council for the mayor's signature.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager.
Had we approved the legislative policy that we talked about earlier, that got postponed, this wouldn't need to have been agendized.
Right.
This would be something that could have been out.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we went ahead and did, we dealt with 9E, so we'll go ahead, skip ahead to 9F, which is the establishing of council meeting time limits. And I'll ask for the staff report, and before we go into that, I would like to make sure that Councilmember Edgar's here on this one, so I don't know if we really want to take action. Do we want to table it, or?
Or continue it to the next meeting?
Continue it to the next meeting? So, go ahead and give your staff report, take in questions, and continue it, is that the?
No, we would just continue it to the next meeting.
Continue it, so we don't even discuss?
Right, we wouldn't even discuss it, just continue to the next meeting.
I'd like to continue with that.
So, you could have a majority.
Okay, so we'll continue that. Wow. All right, so, next item, item 10, it's Mayor and Council initiated business, any council announcements, you want to go ahead and start, Richard?
Okay. I'm going to start off with a negative, and this was truly an embarrassment. I was ashamed to get this on my porch.
I was ashamed to get this on my porch and for this one-sided piece to come out, but I want to actually talk about some positive stuff. And luckily, Tom and Vivian Rothwell are here and I had the honor, true honor, of accompanying them to the California Park and Recreation Society's Awards Installation Banquet where he was honored as a lifetime volunteer. And it got me thinking that this is really what Los Alameda's is about. The people, as yourself and I went to Valentino's and Kenny Brandonberry was there and Valentino's was basically giving the pizzas away so Kenny could raise money. These people have done it their whole life and when I think of Los Alameda's, I do not want to think of this. I want to think of these people who give their heart and soul for the city and thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do. I would like to give a quick plug, the Young Professionals are having a mixer this Thursday at the Green Street Interiors. If you don't know where Green Street Interiors is, you're not paying attention in this city. It goes from 5:00 to 7:00, right, on Thursday? And I'm hoping to get there. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean, if you'd like, so I'm going to ask, Jerry, would you mind?
Sure. The only thing I have in an attempt to move the meeting along is I'd like to ask that we agendize the request that was made by Liga from the Highlands regarding the dog park. I know that we're doing some work on it, but I'd like to see if we could agendize it for the next regular meeting.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Dean, would you mind?
Yeah. I'd like to ask that we close the meeting tonight in honor of Janice Walstrom, the wife of one of our long-term council members, mayor, planning commissioners, who passed away on Mother's Day. And I think it's appropriate in recognition of their family's commitment and involvement with the community that we close in honor of Janice. Also, this coming week on, actually, it's tomorrow, the Sunburst, it's actually not Sunburst, it's a program called Starbase that's going to open up over at the Joint Forces Training Base. We heard earlier about the young people from Sunburst attending. This new program is funded through the Department of Defense and it's a new classroom that's been built over on the base adjacent to where Sunburst is. It's a totally different program that's a Department of Defense program and it deals with STEM education and STEM is science, technology, engineering and mathematics. And they've made decisions across the country, their STEM programs all over, that the fifth grade student is the one that is most susceptible to becoming engaged in learning in those four core areas. And so their program is to bring in fifth graders from throughout Southern California at no cost. They can come over and spend five days in these two classrooms that they have over there and they're expanding to another one down the line here, but it's one day a week for five weeks and the only cost to the school is to provide transportation. And so they're going to have a dedication and official opening of that tomorrow at 11:00 at AM.
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday at 11:00 AM, where the week is coming and going quickly. It'll be on Wednesday at 11:00 AM and a number of the state legislators are going to be there. Again, it's one of those programs that probably won't benefit Los Alameda's students because they're a little bit higher achievements, but you've heard recently about the new 3D printers that are available where you can design something on a computer, send it to this printer and it actually prints it in three dimensions. So you can do parts and things like that. Well, they will have one of those printers over there and it's going to be an exciting program to kick off, but they're looking at a lot of students from the East LA area, primarily being the ones, Speaker Perez from the State Assembly is one of the ones that will be there, has been involved with pushing the funding through from the state side and he will also be there and I think representatives from Loewenthal's office and some of the other offices are also going to be there. So it's kind of an exciting program. For other events and activities that I've been involved with, as I've mentioned in the past, those are listed on my website, which is losal.net and you're welcome to check those out, but I try to keep a record in there of the different things that I've been involved in doing. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. We have a go back?
If the council doesn't mind, there's one thing that I forgot to mention in my council comments. Regarding the flyer that's been brought up tonight several times and Richard held it up, I just want the community, I've received lots of calls for support for Warren and I just want the community to stay focused because I believe that this is an attempt to distract everyone and have them look over at what's going on at this flyer as opposed to look at the real thing that we're facing, which is the prologist development. And so our council and our mayor is leading the charge at protecting the residents and the businesses of this community and in addition to that, looking out for the residents of Cypress, as the gentleman who came up here tonight spoke, please, you know, don't give in to this. And so don't let these smear tactics or these mean words that people came up tonight and said deter any of you. We're doing the right thing. We're doing what we're charged to do as council members and I just wanted to say to the mayor, you're one of the most honorable people I've ever met and I'm very sorry that you're being attacked this way and I'll go ahead and send it back to you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem Graham-Mehia. So for my comments, it has been rather a busy past 30 days or so, besides the flyer that you all received, but I did attend the SCAG Conference, Southern California Association of Governments out in Palm Desert and it was a two-day event and very informative. There are a lot of issues facing municipalities and so we're not going at this alone, there is this resource body that's in place and I know that our region, Andy Quach has stepped down, so I think there's a void there and I'm not sure of the process of filling that in. And I did talk with our local, I guess he's our representative, who's a paid staffer on SCAG that reached out to me, so I do need to have a meeting with him. But the things that, there were seminars that dealt with energy, you know, the clean energy, the low emissions, the carbon, carbon-producing chemicals, that type of thing. Lieutenant Governor Gavin Newsom gave the keynote speech at lunch and all I can say is wow, it was pretty darn impressive what he was talking about and just things that we haven't even really imagined as a society, as a government of people. So there's a lot of things out there that to be scary and a lot of things to be embracing as that next thing. So that was quite enlightening for me and I really appreciate the council let me go and I think I do owe them a report, so I've been remiss in doing that, so I will get a report out to the council on that. And then other than that, I want to thank Councilmember Gross for his, all his work in coordinating the Sunburst Academy out here. I think that was just a well-done event. I was a little skeptical at first because I thought we were going to have a long agenda, but here we are finishing up before 8:30. I think that it went really smooth and I hope we can continue to keep this up, to expose these young people to something different, something new, something that they're going to get in front of all the people and maybe that'll make them curious and want to do this, but I don't know why they would want to do this. But anyways, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close on my comments and I will turn it over to city manager for any comments you have.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, just things going on in the community that I've taken note of, the football coach at Los Alameda's High School, Coach John Barnes, is going into the coach's Football Hall of Fame. He's like the number four or five and it's quite a prestigious honor and I never met him. My son had him for a PE coach when my son attended Los Al High School, but I have read about him and I did note that he got his start at my alma mater and at Corvallis Intermediate School in Norwalk and then wasn't there very long, of course, and went on to bigger and better things and that the girls lacrosse won for like the fourth year in a row and then about five times in most recent and if it would be appropriate, if there'd be no objections, I could also draft a letter of congratulations on behalf of the Mayor and City Council to be sent out.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, anything from city attorney?
Yes, just one thing. I participated in a tour of the base last week. It's a quarterly event limited to 22 or 24 people and I was quite surprised to see that my tour guide was Councilmember Gross, or at least one of the two. Very informative tour, taught me a lot about the base and about the military and about what's going on. At the end, one gets to participate in firing M16 and M4 weapons modified to not shoot real bullets, but that was a lot of fun and just a very enjoyable afternoon. And other than that, no official business to talk about other than the closed session if the council desires. We have one on for consideration of initiation of litigation regarding the prologist development.
No, we pulled that.
That is pulled?
Yes.
Okay, good. Still on my agenda, but you will get to close the meeting before 8:20.
Great. Okay, with that, so thank you all and I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting in honor of, in commemoration of Janice Walstrom, so note that for the record and with that, we'll call meeting adjourned. Thank you.